Hi.
Okay, we're good.
All right. Welcome everyone back to the School Committee for September 12, 2023. We have just got from the executive session and we're back to public meeting. Could everyone please stand for a quick... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do not have a representative who is not here tonight. There is a what we're calling that this committee is participating in. So we wish all families towards while you're sleeping. Public comment. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes and less due to open meeting law. The committee cannot take action on public comment. For items on the agenda, the chair may accept comments from the public following the school committee's decision of an item. Additional comments and feedback can also be submitted by email to school committee@thomask12.ma.us. Are there any public comments? I don't see any comments online and there's only here for public comment. All right. Kelly, could you please read the mission and vision?
Sure. The Thonham School creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. And our mission is that Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you. Our first item on the agenda is to act on the evaluation subcommittee timeline. However, we have some additional information from the state that... Thank you very much. That could impact, not really impact. Kelly, help me, I'm struggling.
Sure. So at the last meeting, Terry had mentioned having a legal review of our timeline and our process, which we did and got input from both Jim Hardy at MASC, our field rep, and also from Andy, our legal counsel. And they had a lot of comments about some of the items that were in our process and highly, highly suggested that we remove some things. So the subcommittee hasn't had a chance to meet yet to talk about revising the timeline, to make these changes. But I brought with me today just a draft of what it might be. We're recognizing that the subcommittee still hasn't talked about it and is going to need to do so at some point. So basically, Jim and Andy informed us that we could not require our existing observation forms where we observe the superintendent, fill out a form, collect that, share it back with the superintendent, and then share it with the committee. We can't do that without making all of those documents public information. And we also can't do a similar process with a mid-cycle evaluation, which is what we were hoping to do, to have a document that the school committee completes, shares feedback with Lori, shares feedback. Actually, that one's not going to be shared with the rest of the committee, but just with Lori, without making that a public document. And one of the things we had talked about at our last subcommittee meeting was that we really wanted these formative pieces to be just that, to not be public record and in the newspaper when there's supposed to be things that track through the year and offer Lori's feedback on how things are going and the progress that she's making. So this draft strikes out all those things that the lawyers told us we needed to take out, like the formative about the location forms and the observations and updates the timeline and instead just replaces that with basically meetings and conversations with Lori instead. So there's no formal forms, but the process is still in place that to keep the intent, which is to be offering continual feedback and information to Lori about her progress on her goals. It just won't have this hard copied paper format because that would have to be part of the public record.
So...
That was long.
No, thank you so very much, Kelly, for explaining the whole thing. So we can do as a committee, we can do one of two things. We can table this until our next school committee meeting so that the subcommittee can come back and look at it. But ultimately, or we can vote on it because ultimately we can't change anything from the state. So we can act on it with the strike throughs from the state again, but we're putting you on the spot, looking at essentially a very edited document of which you've already seen. So I know that collectively, we don't like to be put on the spot. So I'm going to have an open conversation as to what everybody would like to do. We, I sort of talked to Kelly about this very briefly yesterday and we collectively thought that having this discussion in public was the best way to go. Terry?
I move that we table the vote until, I think it's paramount that the subcommittee has gone through it. And it's so hard to like vote on something with strike throughs and you don't understand.
Sure.
But philosophically, we could discuss things. I'm glad that we took out those observation forms because remember I told you they were for opinions that were public. I mean, it wasn't, Lori thought it was just for her, but remember the whole committee saw those in that volume because they were opinions. So it's good that we took those out anyway.
Okay.
And just to say, last year, Lori, I'm not mistaken, every single person that went through, right? During, sometime during the year for discussion, mid-cycle wait? Or maybe one or two didn't?
Most of, maybe all, I'm not, almost like every, call me authority.
Oh, no, I thought that was what we told you last year, that everybody did. And that's what's important is that talk and keeping that conversation.
Keeping that conversation.
Keeping that conversation.
Yeah, that is the spirit. I do appreciate those meetings, Terry.
Couple of clarification questions, I guess, for the subcommittee to consider, as you please. When it says all members meet with the superintendent to make your mark, is that individual meetings? Or?
Yes.
That's not a committee, that's not a committee meeting.
Correct.
If we table this, given that it is currently September 12, what does that, does that shift the timeline? Or do we simply next time vote the timeline and review goals?
Yes.
Okay. So that's the only thing that moves in the timeline?
Yeah.
And then I guess my last...
We can, sorry to interrupt, we gotta pull out the goals and just do that. But to keep it clean, we can just, that could be part of, because it's in the full document, we can just order it out on the 26.
I guess my preference, yeah, would be to keep that so that we get the goals, get the goals on record and give Lori that framework to work with through the year and not be continually delaying the goal setting.
You want to pull the goals out?
No, no, no. Keep the goal timeline as it is, just move the vote on the timeline.
Very good.
To one meeting would be my preference. And then I guess I would just, in terms of these kind of feedback meetings and conversations, especially as a new member, would just appreciate any guidance on how that kind of scheduling of those meetings should happen. Is that, you know?
I went to convocation, Lori, can we chat tomorrow about how convocation went or is that?
Yes, pretty much. It's like a conversation between the member and Lori and what works in whole year schedules.
The chair is the one who should...
Well, we have to share some of that, that's a case for direct communication between the numbers and Sharon and Lori not going through the schedule.
Thanks. Any other?
Sue? If the subcommittee pay attention to the vague actions or deadlines to the document and present presentation of that submitted evaluation to Lori, as I recall, something within state law suggested, maybe even require that the submitted be compiled by someone other than a committee member.
We did talk about that with Jim Hardy and Andy. But the issue is that for committees that do that, they have a secretary that slowly reports to the committee, but we don't have that. So anyone on the staff who would compile would be a subordinate of Lori, which is weird. Okay, so we didn't change it for that reason. But if, so I think if people have suggestions, not just on that, but on any piece of, now that you have those documents, if you notice anything, please just, you know, send them because we're going to meet so we can take them up when we meet next.
Correct.
There was a paragraph in writing that addresses what Sue just said. It is okay to have, it says in the Mass General laws about open meetings and it's a, it's in between open meeting laws. It's a question and answer from the Attorney General that deals just with evaluations. Because I was going to send it to people to read, but there's no page number on it. It's in between these policies, but that, there's a paragraph in writing that says, if you don't have such a person, you may do it. They recommended, I think, one or two people collecting, but you can look at that.
Okay. Thank you, Terry, for that.
Part of this was from last year, I, you know, I was trying to...
Anything else that can, those right away, that we should take back when we meet? Seeing none. Is doing, make a motion or can we just table it?
You can just table it, yeah.
Sure. So we'll table this until the 26. Thank you everyone for your conversation. Okay. Next up, we're going to act on a side letter of the FBA Unit D. Lori?
Yes, so... So this agreement with the Family Educations Association would allow for anyone that, as a nursing unit D, as a nursing unit, that has two bachelor's degrees that are in a related field to nursing education would be placed at a bachelor's plus 30. It would also allow for a Unit D employee, our nurses' unit, who has both a master's degree and the nurse practitioner's certification would be placed at the master's plus 45 for the purposes of their salary. That would be anyone currently that has that or any new employee.
Right. Any questions? I'm not making that motion, I mean, I'm more than happy to make that motion. So I'd like to make a motion to act on the side letter, FBA Unit D. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Because Mike is remote, Terry? Terry, your ears, yes? Heather?
Cold Stone, yes.
Welch, yes. Melissa Keith, yes.
Susan and Dusty, yes.
Murphy, yes.
Mike?
Mike, Hallen, yes?
Thank you, everyone, the nurses, thank you.
I'm sure they'll be very happy.
And I'm happily signed.
That's good.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to act on the North Thonham Roof Project. Dr. Durk?
Yeah, so I'm going to have Paul Dirk speak to it. I think what we had mentioned at the last meeting in August is that, you know, now on our capital plans, we have any borrowing projects. And we thought that the borrowing project would go to the, to the May town meeting, I'm sorry, April town meeting. And then we recently were asked to move that and sort of go to the November. I think we were talking about that in August. So we are asking you, you have this in front of you. So if you want to speak a little bit about the North Thonham Roof and if anyone has any questions, but then we would ask you to vote in favor of moving forward for next summer for the North Thonham Roof.
Right. At North Thonham, as people are aware, there's been some serious problems with leakage on the roof. We've had, we had two breaks from, in the sprinkler systems last year because of problems with insulation caused a significant amount of damage. But it's leaking throughout the school, basically, so it's badly in need of a new roof. The project for the roof alone would be similar in size to T-Ticket, but here on this particular project, it would also include interior work that needs to be done, sealing, insulation, the floors have been damaged from leaking. And on the exterior, there is some masonry work, there's cutters that need to be, are fixed or put in place. A new driveway for the loading dock has to be redone because of the drainage. So it's a larger project than just the roof itself in order to sort of solve the problems. So it's a little, it's higher in cost than what T-Ticket would have. So this is, we brought it up last time as part of a capital plan. So this would be the vote on proving it as a product.
Great. Any questions?
So I just want to make sure I understand what the vote is actually for. It's not to put the item on the warrant. Is it, or is it just to approve, to move it to the spot on our capital plan?
That's right. So we're, the capital plan as it exists today will be going to the warrant. This was going to be originally on the April warrant, as Lori mentioned, but it had to be moved up in timeframe to the November warrant. The town is trying to do all capital projects at once in the, through the approval cycle. So they moved it up and to the November warrant.
Yes, please. So, so when we... So the vote will just be to place the roof and AC projects as amended on this 2024 year?
Yeah.
But then is there a second thing that we will do before town meeting? Or does it, do they just get this? They don't, there's not like a separate article or anything like that?
No, they, they have it, we wrote articles for every project that they have, including the North Thonham Roof. And those articles individually get voted on on town meeting. But for school committee purposes, we need to just vote to include this project as part of our fiscal year 24 overall plan.
But to be clear, what he said, it is going to, for a vote at town meeting this November?
That's right.
As one of the items listed in the capital plan?
Yes, except it's a borrowing, not a, not the capital plan. Right, it's a borrowing item.
Yeah, that's right.
It's not one of the capital, comes out of free cash.
We'll have it on our article.
Yes.
Same here.
Yeah, same, same deal.
Yes.
They're just trying to move them together close to two different times of the year.
So I guess my, my, then my next question is, in the past, we've always had to vote on the actual language for the warrant articles before they go to town meeting. So do we not need to do it for this because it's considered capital or is that going to come back to us?
That was not our understanding.
Yeah, no, that, that was an off understanding.
I mean, I'm sure they're telling me what you need to do. I just want to make sure I know what we need to do.
My understanding is that this priority list, as we see it here, to be approved by the school committee and then the individual warrants file written also approved by the town itself, not individually approved here by the school committee. Because those are the town warrants.
Right, but historically, we've seen, we've seen the articles coming up?
I, if memory serves, certainly, right, the recommendation on the warrant would be from the Finance Committee and the Board of Select.
I don't know if you've seen it.
I, I do remember seeing one of this ago. We did see a description of how it would...
I know we voted on it.
Yeah, we, we've seen that.
But we don't have a separate language when we vote?
No.
The, the town, the budget, the school budget, that doesn't have separate language that we need to approve. So I just want to make sure that we, I just want to make sure we do it right.
We can, we can print the articles, the warrants at our next meeting.
I think that's it.
At the date, and it's applied to the school committee, yeah.
And maybe if they're, if it's because they're being brought by the town manager, that's why we haven't seen them. Because it doesn't, it's not going to say, you know, let's vote about the school committee or something like that. But I just want to, I just need to make sure everything is done. The last thing we want is to get to town meeting and find out if it's ever...
Well, Ed's been guiding us through this process.
Oh, great.
But we can certainly make copies and get the copies of all the...
That'd be great.
That'd be great.
The descriptions.
I would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, no, that's fine. Yes, we can definitely do that.
Can I just ask for a little bit of a refresher since we're moving the North Thonham Roof into this line item? But it is roof and AC projects broadly that's there. What all is included in that, that line at this point for this year?
For this year, it's, it's just the roofing and the tangential projects that I talked about, that, you know, some of the work on the ceilings and floors and so. There's no AC project for North Thonham in this year's. When we do get to North Thonham and doing the boiler over, putting it in a boiler and unit bed system, then at that point, we will look to add the air conditioning as part of that project.
So if I can say something about the air conditioning? I mean, we are asking to have an assessment of all of our buildings, but we have an understanding of that. Because these are borrowing, that's the only thing we're thinking that's going to need borrowing. So it was kind of lumped into that line item. We could, we could probably separate, just to be clear on here so nobody thinks that we're going roof and AC for North. And of course, when you see the request form, when we said that, that it would be very clear and they go, AC's not included for this year. But we, once we get the assessments, we're going to bring it back to the school committee. That would be our next step, just to show what they're estimating the cost for each building. But we did, so the further out, the following year was, we moved, we shifted. And they had a shift, we shifted all of these down. So the next one was for the Morris Pond Roof. And then it was for just estimates about maybe whatever conditioning would be for the next, so we're here, so. Now, the roofs have to, have to move.
Yeah, I mean, to be clear, I'm not asking that this be modified in any way. I just wanted to be clear that I, that I understood it was in, was in, yeah. It's in that 4.9.
Yeah, and the rest there will be very clear.
And I appreciate the attention to air conditioning, as we've also, you know, the past week.
Yeah.
As a growing issue, so.
Okay, is there a motion to act on the North Thonham Roof Project? Make a motion to add the North Thonham Roof Project to the 2024 capital plan. Is there a second? Second, thank you. Roll call, Chris?
Okay, yes.
Dusty, yes. Welch, yes?
Cold Stone, yes.
Your ears, yes?
Mike?
Mike, Hallen, yes?
Melissa Keith, yes. Okay, thank you, everyone. Now, moving on to act on the budget timeline, Dr. Durk?
So the timeline, as we had talked about before, follows the same pattern that we've used in the past, that we added one additional subcommittee meeting in normal, and that is the September 6. And just an additional, just because we have a lot going on with projects also just, you know, just wanting to make sure that we're staying updated with the Finance Committee and the School Committee together. That's who makes up the budget subcommittee. So otherwise, the timeline follows suit as I've been having here.
It's the normal commitment. Is there a motion to act on the budget timeline?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget timeline.
Thank you, Terry, is there a second?
I'll second it. So my question is that at the last meeting, I had a concern about one of the meeting's time and now I can't remember which one it was and I think we fixed it.
We did, it was September 19 and it was supposed to be September 12, it was tonight.
Okay. I just couldn't remember what it was, so I didn't remember and we fixed it.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion? Okay, roll call, Chris?
Willby, yes.
Dusty, yes.
Welch, yes?
Cold Stone, yes.
Your ears, yes.
Mike?
Hallen, yes?
Melissa Keith, yes. Great, thank you, everyone. Dr. Durk, update in safety in schools?
Yes, I'd like to introduce and welcome back Paul Stefanelli, our coordinator, safety coordinator. So he's going to just give us an update to start a school. So welcome, thank you.
During the last year, in continuing with this year, the safety, excuse me, school year, safety has been a priority for the Thonham School District. The district currently has safety monitors assigned to each of the seven schools and one additional safety monitor covered for any days off that may be needed throughout the year. Each monitor is assigned to a specific school who is responsible for the security of the building staff and students. They are expected to conduct checks of the school grounds and the buildings to ensure only authorized persons are allowed on the property. Throughout the last year, the focus was to remind staff and students to secure all doors when they enter or exit the buildings and not to prop doors open. Safety monitors reported numerous doors that were found unsecure for several reasons. If the door was propped open, an effort was made to determine who left it open and those individuals were reminded of the need to secure doors. If the door was found to be not functioning properly, a request was made to have that door repaired. With the assistance of the Thonham Police Department, two intruder drills were completed at each school to prepare students and staff in the unlikely event of a violent intruder. With the assistance of school administration, several sheltered place or weather-related drills were conducted at each school to better prepare for events that may arise in the rural warning. At the end of the school year last year, the district was able to train 11 staff members and six safety monitors as ALIS certified instructors. These 16 staff members are now able to train other staff members in the skills and strategies to increase their and their students' survivability in the case of violent attacks. The Thonham School District has also entered into an agreement with Sandy Hook Say Something Anonymous Reporting System, or TIP line. This is an app-based program that a student can download onto their phone, laptop, laptop or tablet. Student can then submit a tip any time of day using the app. These tips can be about anything such as bullying, substance abuse, suicide, or potential threat to the school or your students. This will allow students to anonymously report incidents that they may not normally want to get involved in before they have to. Say Something Anonymous Reporting System has a dedicated 24/7, 365 days a year crisis center that will determine the necessary response based on the credibility of the tip and its criteria. This program has also a phone number which can be called as well. Sandy Hook Promise will also provide training for students and staff to help them identify the signs of potential violence. During the school year last year, a review of the comprehensive emergency management plan was completed with several changes being made to the emergency response protocols and the reunification plan at the high school. A new copy of the plan has been distributed to all schools and is available in the administration, administrative office of each school as well as the district office. This school year, the focus will shift to ensuring staff are wearing proper school identification and are providing the training and Alice concepts. It will also be more focused on visitor entry into the building during school day. All visitors to the building should be required to register at the main office at each school they visit and be provided with a visit pass. All visitors should enter at one entry point with the exception of maintenance workers. All maintenance workers who enter the building should also be provided a visit pass by the authorizing staff member in the school administration office should be notified. No, no one should be allowed into the building without the school administration office being aware of their presence. Police department will continue with two drills at each school and additional drills will be scheduled throughout this school year. These additional drills may again be sheltered place drills or weather-related drills with some obstacles added in order to prepare staff for unexpected situations. Safety monitors will continue to conduct checks of the school grounds and security checks of the buildings throughout. Safety monitors will continue to conduct checks of the school grounds and security checks of the buildings throughout the day, and assist as needed with the arrival and dismissal of students as in the past. It will essentially be the plans.
Anyone have any questions? I do. Um, what's the app for the students to let them get on?
What is the name of the app?
Yes.
It is the, uh, Say Something Anonymous Reporting.
That's just so, so they can search Say Something Anonymous Reporting System?
When, when they come, when, when we start actually doing this, when we put it online, they will come and they will show us how we, we can get to the app. Right now, we can't use the app at all, we're not, we're not actually onboard yet. We're in the process of onboarding.
What's the timeline on that?
December fifth will be the beginning of that, and depending on how quickly we can get through the process, we could be done in two months, we could be done in four months, depends on how quickly we get through the process.
Okay.
It includes training of staff and students.
Sure. And then at that time, that phone number will also be associated with that for students?
Yes.
What, uh, today, if a student saw something, what would they do?
At this point, they would usually go to a trusted adult and, and speak with that trusted adult and let them know what they saw or heard or whatever, whatever the case may be.
Okay. Um, how many students are at Falmouth High School? Roughly, about.
Just for numbers.
Okay, so plus staff, under a thousand. Um, and I kind of just had this question, uh, roll into my head as you were giving a presentation, of which thank you very much for. In my place of employment, we wear I D badges, and, uh, the people that we represent, uh, also have wristbands on to identify them. I know that, uh, for staff in the building, we require, in all buildings, we require I D badges, and that includes if you're volunteering for the day, or if you are coming in, um, as a substitute teacher, uh, or a vendor of some sort. How, how do we know that all of our students are all of our students? Like, how would, let's say, uh, Melissa Keith is a year one teacher, fresh out of college, I just graduated, and I come into this setting, and I'm, you know, welcoming students into my classroom, and I'm trying to get to know everybody. But obviously, I don't know everyone because I teach, uh, French. But, so I wouldn't know students, um, somewhere else. So how, how, how do we know that all of our kids are all of our kids and not just somebody that maybe scooted in in the hype of the morning, or just sort of, again, a question that came to me as we were sitting here?
Well, I would assume that would only apply to high school.
I, I was sort of, sort of processing that out as well, because I feel like at the elementary level, at the other levels, it wouldn't necessarily apply. But, right.
So at the high school, there are two entry points, in the front doors, which will be manned by the principal and one of the assistant principals, uh, at the back where the students are dropped off. There is the one, the security monitors is there, and then there is one of the other assistant principals are both present, um, as well as other teachers and staff. Um, I would hope that they would be able to tell who is a student and who isn't. Uh, we currently do not have I Ds for students. Um, certainly, I suppose that would be a good idea, um, but I don't know how you can get students to wear them.
To comply, no, I got it. Uh, and again, it was just a question that I had, and I didn't know if maybe, uh, that had come up in any discussions or forums that you've sat on, or, um, just, so it sounds like four people are responsible for putting eyes on seven hundred-plus students in a less than five, ten minutes, you know?
I've been there early in the morning going to the LIPS meetings, like.
Yes.
There's more than two people there.
Sure.
You have, you have that, um, S I O officers often there, there's a couple of teachers there, it isn't just two people.
No, I, I'm not, I, I'm not thinking that we're not doing a good job of making sure that all of our students are all of our students. I literally was just thinking, as we're sitting here, paralleling it to my own place of work. I wear a badge, I make sure that my name shows in my credentials and my name in my picture. Every time I'm at, I need the schools, it's the same thing. The staff has their badge on, and you can see who they are and what their credentials, uh, but what do we do for our students?
At this point, it's staff and at the doors, uh, just ensuring that who's coming to the door is a student.
Okay.
Uh, but there is no identification required.
Okay. Thank you.
So something you said, um, and that you've shared sparked a question, um, which started with, okay, we've now got a phone app for students to report, but we've also adopted this year some policies around trying to keep phones in bags and out of sight and potentially, you know, not, not in hands for one of the classrooms. So my first question was, oh, how do those two things interact? And then that kind of sparked a broader question of how much communication is there between, um, conversations around safety, conversations around mental health, around wellness? Because both in terms of prevention and in terms of kids, um, even going through ALIS drills or confronting these, you know, possibilities, um, mental health, psychological safety are a big issue there. So I'm just curious how much conversation there is between those different, um, you know, groups responsible for those, those aspects of, of student life.
Well, I think once the Say Something group comes in, they're going to arrange for that type of training. Uh, I'm not sure what's in place at each specific school when it comes to the mental health aspect of things. Uh, I certainly understand that when these things, even the drills, it, it gets people a little anxious. We try to do them in a way where, you know, it's not going to be too bad, uh, but unfortunately, those types of drills are going to cause anxiety, this, this will be a lot of, um, it causes anxiety in students, it causes anxiety in staff. They, they get anxious just knowing it's coming, because they don't know when it's coming, but they know when it's coming soon, um, and they, they can get anxious about it.
I'd like to add on to that.
Um, you know, all of our buildings are council staff, our school adjustment councils, our school psychologists are on that. And then we've had training throughout the district, which is the actual psychological first aid training. So we have counselors specifically trained in that, not only in our schools, but also for the community response that we do with Falmouth Community Services, the police, and fire and all of that. Um, so we do have that in the buildings, and, um, anytime there is any, whether it's a drill or there's a real life event, um, we have our counselors that are good to life. If, if, you know, notice some of our communication, things like that, we have our counseling staff with a different color. Safety, that's the text, so that people can clearly identify who the coaching people are.
Yeah, and I appreciate all that, and, um, I guess I was also just thinking on the prevention end of it, right? Little bit violent incidents that happen, it's often a student or former student, um, who's perpetrating that act. And I was actually, I just heard on the radio the other day, a great story about the Hope Squad. It's wonderful, and about how successful they're being, and I guess I was just wondering if there's room to kind of expand that and think about mental health and also getting students involved in taking some, I'm not saying we shift the responsibility for school safety to our students, but empower students to be part of feeling like they're creating a safe and caring environment even more along that, that model of the Hope Squad.
We are looking at expansion within that, and then from the preventative, um, in case all of the, the, um, mental health services that we have in place through both our in-staff and our community partners, um, with Gosmo, with the claims, and that. So we're doing as much as we can for awareness and prevention to be ahead of that. And we also have our, um, you know, any evaluations, our tiers of support, our evaluations for success and things like that, to make sure that we're also aware of what we have ahead of us. You know, to make sure that we're keeping our, uh, all of our students, our staff, our whole school community as safe as possible.
Melissa, can I just want to brief that's your comment?
Yes, I just also, while we've got you here, um, I want to just say, um, last year, when we had, I think the closest we've had to an actual violent incident, we had, I, I happened to have the panel in all three affected schools at that time. And I just want to say kudos. Um, the, the whole thing was, parents were informed, reunification went incredibly smoothly. Yes, it takes time, but it, it just, and there were counselors there, there were not just counselors and staff, there were teachers there, trusted adults there, talking to the kids as they were waiting. Um, and I'm like, God, I'm getting emotional to tell you about it, but like, it just, it went pretty much as perfectly as it, as it had of gone, so.
Thank you.
We, we just have one other thing. The TIP line requires each school have a Say Something Promise Club in the school, which in all three schools is going to be the Hope Club, that they've been reattached together. They've already arranged for that to happen, um, it's supposed to have, we're supposed to have it officially online by the end of this month. Um, so we just have one teacher that's, I've got to get her, get online and do it. Um, but I expect to have that done by next week. So there will be a, a club that's basically to do all the, the safety type stuff. But it looks like they're all going to be attached to that Hope Club, just because that's a club that is already existent. It's easier to stop with something that's already there and work, work on reality. They could split at some point, but for now, that's where they're all going to start out.
So, um, once the Sandy Hook Promise, um, TIP line is enacted, I would hope that we, um, issue appropriate press releases to the public in regards to soliciting the help of perhaps parents or former students, as you mentioned, or someone that hears something out in the community, not just within the school community.
So we, well, certainly anybody can call a phone number.
Yeah.
Certainly put it out there that.
Yeah, but I mean, advertise it enough so people know that this is a possibility.
Correct. The only issue there becomes that the school department is the one that's responsible for fielding these, um, calls. So if there was something from the community that doesn't have anything to do with schools, then we'd still be responsible for fielding that, whatever that call might be.
So for instance, say I have a child that, um, had, former graduate, and threatened to do something at the school, I, as a community member or parent,
Yes.
want to call into that TIP line.
Yes.
And I want to know that there's a TIP line available.
Yes. Yeah, the public will definitely know.
Okay.
They just, you know, where, where the one's fielding anything, unless it's an emergency. If it's an emergency, it's going straight to the main line, and the police department's going to deal with that. But anything that comes up that's not a, an emergency type of event is going to come to the school to make decisions on. So if it's not a school-related thing, then we're going to, we're going to have to either give it to the police or somebody else at that point. That would be the only.
But I think you're referring to situations that still could be school-related.
Yes, yes.
And so I think in, in how we provide, um, our press release or our flyer or whatever, we'll, we'll be very specific on how we do that, yeah. And we're going to learn more about how, through this process with, with Say Something, we're going to learn about how to do that.
Any other questions? No? Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, moving on to the presentation of superintendent goals.
All right, so, um, I'm going to, uh, share the draft goals, uh, at your seat. You have both the presentation and you have, um, the paper copy, um, to follow through. And we will, uh, start, this is for this school year, my student learning goal. Uh, I'm proposing that is maintain a focus on academic excellence while improving the Clipper experience for all students. The, um, standards, the, uh, indicator, the focus indicators for this will be the, um, under, uh, standard one instructional leadership, the data-informed decision-making. Under standard three, family and community engagement, that'll be A, engagement. And standard four, professional culture of commitment to high standards. And also in your package, you will find those specific standards that will be outlined and behind that, uh, are beside. So key action step one, uh, is to review and analyze student achievement data by district, school, grade and cohorts with, uh, the administrative team, administrative teams are directors and principals. Uh, collect and analyze advanced course enrollment data at Townes High School to identify areas to improve equity and access and pursue academic excellence, and to incorporate the guidance from foreign communications to ensure communication is effective. Um, the benchmarks, uh, on that is that we will report to the school committee on the M P A S data that's prior to and, uh, post-COVID. Uh, there were, uh, a restart of the baseline, uh, set by, uh, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Uh, and, uh, at that time, I'll communicate, um, that, that new baseline, um, that was established last spring. And, uh, and then we will have, um, uh, also report to the school committee on the identified areas of growth and areas of concern based on that information. And those three will be a part of one presentation in the school committee. And then a separate, uh, presentation later on in the, uh, school year is a report, uh, on the advanced course, uh, enrollment data and everything we can gain from that. Key action step number two for this, uh, goal is improve the two-way communication about the student academic experience and outcomes, and then incorporate the guidance, uh, uh, from foreign communications. Um, my benchmarks, uh, hold seven conversation sessions, one per school, with teachers and support staff to identify and understand the practices that improve the student academic experience. So hearing from our staff, and then, um, as a, uh, second, um, benchmark is to hold six conversation sessions with students at Townes High School to, again, identify and understand the key influences in their academic experience. Continue to, uh, meet with each of the three student advisory, uh, groups. Uh, so I have the, um, uh, K six group, the, um, seven, eight, uh, student advisory, and the, uh, high school student advisory. Uh, again, really focusing this year on that, uh, student, uh, experience, academic experience. Um, and, and just working and understanding more about moving toward excellence, having that feedback. And then, to continue, I have an open door policy, I always have for, um, family, students, staff, um, that can meet with me one-on-one, um, you know, or small groups, however they prefer. Uh, and certainly will, uh, keep that, and will have, uh, and kind of track those type of experiences of, uh, what's going well and what the concerns might be. And goal two, uh, is my professional practice goal, and that's to build capacity among all members of the administrative team to effectively communicate the mission, vision, values, priorities and activities of the Falmouth Public Schools. The focus indicators are standard three, family and community engagement, um, in the communication section. Uh, standard three, family and community engagement, family concerns, and standard, uh, four, professional, uh, culture, and again, the communications. Um, this is the communication goal. Um, so key step one is that the administrative council, uh, will be trained with, uh, foreign communications during three, uh, sessions. Uh, so we will, um, identify the area of concern, uh, with Chris Horn. We will, um, learn and then develop and practice our skills. And then we will have a report to the school committee about our newly acquired skills and the changes that we would expect. Um, key action step two is to communicate, uh, the, um, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four key focus areas. Um, increase and improve, uh, written communication with staff and families, and then incorporate the guidance of providing, uh, prior notifications. Um, benchmarks is deliver excellence and equity message and areas of improvement to the staff during convocation. Uh, present district goals and areas of focus to the school committee, uh, which is currently planned for our next meeting, uh, on September twenty-sixth. And then delivering a fewer than eight, uh, letters to staff and families. And with this goal, I have a, uh, key action step three, uh, provide opportunities for two-way communication, and again, incorporating what we're learning from foreign communications. The benchmarks would be continued open door policy, again, uh, with parents, families, students, staff, but also the school committee members. but also the school committee members. And I will maintain a block in the superintendent's calendar each week to accommodate in-person meetings. So I will, although twofold, we pretty much try to fork in anybody on the spot that wants to talk, whether it's phone call or to come in in person immediately. And I don't want to wait and change that practice. I'm also going to block time. And I hope this is a time where school committee members would also feel comfortable to come in. Hold seven coffee hour sessions, one in each school, but all are welcome from any school to any other. I'll have a variety of times, before school, after school, in the evenings. Anyone's welcome, but they will be hosted when I do school this year. And then one-to-one sessions with teachers. I'm actually going to house myself for a full day in each one of the buildings. Teachers can come in throughout the day to talk one-on-one. And then we are beginning our Town of Public Schools belonging series this year. Henry and I have worked on this. This really came out of last year where, at the end of a series of family forums, we had agreed that we really want to learn together on how we can make sure that all students will welcome. And so this is the belonging series. These will be facilitated by Dr. Cleese Warren. You may remember from years ago when she helped. So we'll have Dr. Warren facilitate the meetings and then just so that we're all learning as far as administrator, staff, families together this year. Goal three, my district improvement goal. Complete a comprehensive review of the business office practices and procedures to improve effectiveness and increase transparency. Focus indicators, and again, for each one of these, you've got a packet in your folder, these specific indicators. Standard two, management operations, the environment. And standard two, management operations, the fiscal systems. And then standard three, family and community engagement. My key action step one is to increase opportunities for the administrative team to understand effective budget processes. Our benchmarks is to conduct one training with the administrative team and then meet three times with individual principals. That's with the HR office, business office, the principals around the budget staffing process. Key action step two, increase the number of two-way communication opportunities related to the operating budget and capital plan. Again, incorporating what we're learning from foreign communications. The benchmarks, report the school committee budget updates at seven meetings. Again, this is something new that we are incorporating this year. We actually started at the last meeting. Along with that presentation, we're going to do a budget highlight that dives deeper into one aspect of the overall budget. For example, we'll have a focus area on just grants. We'll have one focus area on special education, one on transportation, one on maintenance, and one on capital projects. Seven meetings, that's not seven, so there's a couple of that'll probably cover, you know, a couple areas. We'll hold five budget subcommittee meetings, hold three finance subcommittee meetings, hold four meetings with the town CFO, and, oh, and then a presentation to the finance committee. And so the timeline for completion, I did back the date back up to July 2023, assuming that you approved the goals. If we make any adjustments, we'll certainly adjust that. And then the timeline goes through April 8th, which is my report out to the school committee on the goals for the year for this summer. And that's it. You have any questions? I'm happy to answer them. Just curious in terms of the final goal. Key action step two, increasing two-way communication opportunities. There's school committee and town officials there. And I'm curious about family engagements. I'm just assuming that the family engagement around public stays the same, and so it's not in here, or? So family and community engagement, so it includes the town. I'm going to read that specifically. So engagement with the community residents, municipal officials, business leaders, so that we're all part of doing the mission. So that's a part of the actual list in the standard.
It's not listed on the draft year?
It's listed in the standard. In the standard.
Yeah.
But certainly families as well. Even though I don't have it on here, we have budget meetings with all the students. So certainly feedback from the community and our parents and guardians on the budget is a part of the process as well. I did miss one. I clicked twice. If I can go back to this here. And this was the key action step three. That's why I thought I was missing something. Improve process for identifying building maintenance projects. And this is really, Paul and myself and some other key people, but have really been trying to improve the process of how we're going to identify projects that really are, you know, our buildings are older. And, you know, we have seen some deterioration. And Paul has done a great job going around and really inspecting the buildings and really need to build in a process for identifying what needs to happen. So we're spending a lot of time on this, and so I thought this was another piece of that business office. But the other piece of it is really advocating, right, that our budget for the maintenance portion of our operating budget and capital plan really is sufficient for us to be able to keep up the maintenance on our buildings. And so there is a piece that, you know, really helping to explain to the town about what the needs are, you know, possibly doing tours so that they're in the schools, they're seeing. So we are going to put some real effort in to making people aware of what's needed in our buildings. And then just with the town, exploring other options about how to cover some more one-time expensive costs. But even how do we cover if something comes up during the year, right? Which has happened, and our operating budget just does not allow for an expensive item to be covered. So just looking at that. So just the one-way communication with the town manager and the CFO around this and just looking at exploring options. And so we'll keep you updated on what happens. No, thank you. Any other questions?
Yes. Excuse me. In regards to key action step three, I would very much welcome the opportunity, first of all, to meet the new town in New Australia and to be part, this committee will be part of that tour, those tours as well. So we are in a position to know what actually is conditionally to our buildings.
Absolutely. I agree on that. That's great. We will definitely.
Thank you.
Which will be a different focus because we're also doing another. We are doing another, we are setting up another tour of the buildings. And that's more academic focus, like what's happening with the students. And then our separate tour that we'll invite you to is really around to see the, our buildings and the conditions.
So two things, you know, I'm a big fan of including things in here that you're doing. So if we're going to do, if the school committee is also going to be involved in touring buildings to know about maintenance needs so that when we, you know, if we see firsthand what capital projects are coming down the road, I mean, we should put that in there. And to Heather's comment about the family meetings for the budget, I mean, they're happening anyway, so we should include those. And other than that, you know, I just, I appreciate you taking the feedback from our conversation when the subcommittee met. And, you know, we had such a great discussion, it's supposed to be a collaborative process. And I thought it definitely was. And I think these are really tight goals that will lend to a really good year. I really, I really like them a lot, especially the budgetary ones. I think it's going to be great for the committee as well to be part of your process in working on those, so.
I also appreciate the subcommittee. That was good.
It was a really good thing. It's a product of going out and running around. Sorry.
In the spirit of collaboration, you said you're going to house yourself in the buildings. You know me, I go in a lot when I go to the classrooms. I mean, that's, that's just, it's just so much. And I've said to teachers over the years, you know, invite me in. And you don't get that very much. So maybe with you being there more, we could ask if, I mean, I have the time during the day, other people work, so I have that luxury. If you could maybe encourage teachers to invite me in. Because, I mean, you're not really interested in teachers. You want to see the kids anymore, you know? And you're just overwhelmed by all the things they're learning. So maybe if you could add that on your to-do list.
Okay.
I mean, it's a great goal, too. I think back to who said, oh, when we had our retreat, and Jim said to us, at the beginning of every meeting, you should think, how is this going to help students? Each, you know, each meeting, you should have that thought at the top. How is this going to help students? So it's good that you made that goal this year.
Thank you. From goal number one, key action step two, two-way communication about the student academic experience and outcomes. I appreciate how much time you're going to be spending talking to teachers and to the high school students. And I understand that hundreds of elementary school students, it can be hard to get input. But I wonder if either by specifically talking with high school students about their experiences earlier in their academic career, or putting some thought into how to engage our younger students more broadly in some of this gathering of information about their experiences? Because no disrespect to the student advisory groups, but those are like, those are a very small group of students who are likely to be some of our highest flyers with some of those positive experiences already. And so just trying to get a broader sense of the elementary and middle school level, what are some of those influences on the experience? We can discuss that in the subcommittee. And just so we know, the advisory committees are very diverse. Students from all experiences in school. So I just, that's been very important to me since I've been here. We take a lot of time and effort to try to make sure we have every voice at the table when we go. But it is still a small group, I imagine.
I would love to know how we're going to get students in the lower level to, not just students in the lower level, but students that when they are asked at home, how is your day or how are things going, other than the one-word answer? What open-ended questions will be used? Anyway, just to make sure that we're getting them to articulate their best experience. Not their best experience, but the best way to describe their experience.
One way to overcome that is to have more than one kid. Have two kids sitting there. They help each other.
That's always helpful. Always helpful.
I think that works a lot in my experience.
Any other questions? Comments? Great. Thank you, Dr. Dyer. We appreciate that. Thank you. Those goals. I'm looking forward to them. Moving on to superintendent update. Once again.
Okay, so school started last Tuesday. We actually had a great, great start, even despite the heat. Being tired by the end of the day, the students really seemed to be happy to be there, and the staff really were just fantastic, moving, you know, working through the heat, getting there, and just having a really fun experience for kids starting at the school year. So very happy with that. We started out, so this year, we did something as an admin team across the district. And we put up signs that actually included every language for our district. And so it made this one, it made the different sign, different schools did a little bit something. But we were really just trying to say, you know, welcome. I don't know, when you go through the high school, even on the electronic sign that the students had donated in 2016.
They were at the football game the other night with those signs. Maybe those signs were illuminated.
Oh, during the time?
Yeah, in the parking lot.
They're still going.
Yeah.
They might have started them, but they're still going.
And we actually got some good feedback from students that, it's like, how am I language? That's great. So they're noticing and they, it does, you know, there's a different kind of feeling. Would you want to share the one student experience that you shared the other day?
The one student, which one?
It's okay. It's all right. It's just how excited the student was when they saw their language up. But anyway, it's just, yeah. So anyway, so we were starting out because we're really trying to, you know, again, back to our goals, you know, here in our district, goals next meeting, about just really looking at that excellence in that every student. And so when they see themselves, that's a welcome. So we're excited about that. Composting started upon Halloween. I was there on day one. I was absolutely amazed at how smoothly this went, and the kids just understood. We're really thinking we're not going to need as long a timeframe to be able, lessons learned before we start the other three elementary schools. So we're really excited that it's just going so smoothly. And it's, it seems so natural at it. So that's really a good sign for our young students to think in that manner. Our Project 351 students painted rocks with very touching sayings in the honor of 9/11. And they're out around our flagpole out here. And so they came last night and put a lot of messages just that, you know, never forgotten, always will be remembered. And then the Project 351 students, just a little bit, this is our ambassadors. It's a state project, so 351, there's 351 municipalities in the state of Massachusetts. There's two students selected every year. They go to have events that pretty much run a year that they attend, and then they can stay on as ambassadors after that. So this was a project across the state. And each student was given a name of a specific person that lost their life on 9/11. And so they're named in the rocks. So it's nice that the remembrance and the tradition carries on each year. So that was their project this year. And you even mentioned the Hope Squad on the NPR. And I just wanted to say again to, you know, just, we're very proud of the Hope Squad and our advisors, you know, all of our students. Just the awareness that they've brought is just, and just being the compassion to all the students. So we're really excited about that. The message of convocation this year was nothing new. So just trying to get better at what we're doing. And so we're really, you know, we feel like we've got most of the puzzle pieces that we need. I guess I would say, if not all, we'll certainly learn more from our equity audit this year, you know, what else we need to add in. But we feel like we have all the components. We just need to get really focused and get better at what we're doing. So we were staying the same, so focusing on strengthening our, continuing our social emotional learning as a support. We stored justice practices, which we started several years ago, focusing on that. You know, the mastery of learning, and, you know, we are, we are not starting anything new. We are still learning. It's a learning year. So again, nothing new, staying up to date with that. And then we did talk about tightening up the discipline expectations for this year. So around the dress, we did, and this really came from feedback from our staff. I think, you know, through COVID, it was, it was hard because we had different rules. And then last year was our first full year back and just trying to find our way a bit about, you know, what the rules should be and the expectations and helping our students. But one of the dress code is that there will be no hats and hoods. But one of the dress code is that there will be no hats and hoods coming into school or in school. And that was really, we need to see the faces for our students. So safety reasons coming into the buildings. I mean, you've kind of brought that up. We need to see the faces. A lot of hats are covering the face and that's difficult. So that's one piece. But the other is for our teachers to be able to connect with our students. And we need to see our students to be able to do that. So that, we're improving that. Also, the language that hurts. And we are really going to focus in on, you know, how unacceptable it is. We're going to do a lot of proactive, but there's going to be, you know, there's, through restorative practices, through consequences, there's got to be some accountability when, you know, when what we say may hurt another person. And then our behaviors that disrupt the learning of ourselves or others, right? And just really kind of focusing on. So if we're talking about excellence and we're really going to focus in on excellence for every student, then we have to look at what visitor gators are that make the key decisions. So we're really tightening that up. So I think that was positive among our staff to hear that focus on it. All right, so the tennis sports project is moving along. Again, we are ahead of, a bit ahead of schedule. We're definitely under budget. But recently, it has come up about the pickleball lines on the courts. Are the scope of the project included all eight courts to be aligned for pickleball? It's been brought up that there has been some concern around that. And so working with the town manager, the request has come through that we only paint four courts the furthest away from Gifford. And so as we did the actual mapping of the nearest homes, it is about 400 feet from the first home, but within 500. And when we researched it, to really make sure there's no noise or disruption, it should be about under 400 feet. So we're going to, we're going to paint pickleball on four courts and not on the other four courts. So I just wanted to know there's a change in that scope. And.
I'm sorry, who brought that up to not do?
So that the, there were concerns brought up to the town. And so the town manager, assistant manager, who had conversations with that, making sure. And so we don't, you know, we certainly want everyone to feel comfortable around. So we feel like this is a nice balance. The four courts are greater than actually 500 feet. And then what we, the others is just us.
That's too bad.
I would be curious to know how the warrant audit was written and how it was promoted at town meeting? And whether it included that information when it was voted on at town meeting?
I could pull it, I do.
Yeah.
I know that the actual, when we went out for RFP, it said pickleball courts. I don't know that it was that specific enough.
It didn't say how many courts. It didn't say how many courts for tennis or how many courts for pickleball. It was just generic, tennis and pickleball.
I live smack dab on top of those, on woods and next to those courts. And I mean, I hear all, there are a bunch of teams out practicing soccer or field hockey, whatever. And it's not even that noisy. So is it just the ball?
It's the ball and the paddle.
That's too bad.
Yeah, I've learned more about the distance of the paddle and the ball and the distance and what is that, is it a play difference? I thought I would know, but now I do. And we, I mean, we seriously looked into it and had conversations. You know, it's, it was working with the town on, you know, being able to meet the needs of all working with the town. Also, around the tennis courts, I want to let you know that, and I believe I had mentioned this before, that we are going to have the tennis courts open during the day. Tennis courts slash pickleball during the day with the schools, as long as the schools are not using the courts. So the conversation also came around with the Falmouth High School track and opening it up to the community. We've been asked, we've talked, talked to the district head and Nellie as far as safety with the town or with the schools, where the principal and the coaches would like to open up for the community to have access when we're not using them. So we'll have signage, the same as we have used in the past at Lawrence with their tennis courts, where the community can come in. We just have signage that lets the community know when we need them. And then they just wouldn't be on at that time. And so we are going to, when we open up the tennis courts, we're going to open up the track at the same time, the signage about using both the court, the track and the.
Could I make a suggestion surrounding that? If, for example, Falmouth High School was through using the tennis courts at, say, 4 o'clock, I'm just using our, maybe we could give up like a 15-minute buffer so that there aren't community members anxiously waiting on the, like waiting, physically waiting for kids to leave the court so that they can get in and be the first in line. I understand that, you know, the facilities are few in the town and I understand that. But the last thing that anybody wants is for kids to feel like they're being rushed or for parents to feel awkward that there's other adults rushing their student out. So that's just my suggestion.
Absolutely. I think you did that. And then just wanted, you know, Peter Clark and David Ozenberg have been here in the past about the Affordable Connectivity Program. And so we're continuing to try to reach out to families in different ways. They're still planning on coming to the fall to, so now they drive PTOs now, working with the staff and maybe getting the word out. They have had some people reach out to them. This was just one great story I just wanted to share is that they were able to get one family that current cost was $90 a month and they were able to bring the payment down to zero. And so I just really want to say this publicly, you know, it really could be work. But Peter and David are more than happy to sit down with the family, step by step, and walk all the way through. So I just encourage families to reach out because it obviously works, you know?
That's great.
Yes.
You said they've worked through the PTOs in the past and curious, do they come to meet the teacher nights? And.
So they have such tables, they have it. It hasn't been, it hasn't been successful. And that's why we're going to go through working with the teachers. Because the teachers know, you know, I mean, they can help cheer up the students because the students can help out with the parents. And then what really, you know, what we figured out is they just need to have a parent call and they just need to schedule times so they can just walk all the way through with them, hand in hand, and to help them get them. It's not an easy process, but they're pretty much willing to do it. I'll just, you know, relay the information from the family. So I just wanted to add that in. We did have, so we've had a couple of successful ones like that now. And then my last update is just to let you know that Comcast is changing the channels. It will no longer be channel 14 starting on the 21st. Actually, I have a little. It won't, it won't no longer be on the 21st. It'll be channel eight, not 14. So everyone tune in to channel eight starting on the 21st. That's the educational channel.
I feel like that should be tickered across the bottom of the screen.
It's like an idea.
It is. Change. Change.
It's a mini-commercial.
Is it?
Go ahead. If convocation was taped, can we get a link? I would love to see it.
Yes, I'm sorry. It was, I apologize. Ryan shared the link with me. I have not sent that out to you.
That was great.
Yes, I will get that out to you. And that was my intention when I asked for it.
Go ahead. A nice joke around what I do with you this. I sent her a text and I said that ABC News had called me for a reference to hire her in the American.
That was pretty funny.
I would like the thank you notes.
The thank you notes.
The thank you. Jimmy Fallon, "Thanks."
That was good.
I've cut that one from a lot of people.
All right.
Glad I could pull that off.
Thank you. Moving on to routine business. You all have the minutes from August 22nd, 2023 in front of you. Can I make a quick call? Is there a motion to approve the minutes of August 22nd, 2023? Is there a second?
Last second.
Terry, any discussion? No, it's not.
Roll call.
Okay, no discussion. Roll call. Let's start with Mike for fine. Mike?
Mike, yes.
Mike? Terry?
Yes.
Well, it's one of those.
Well, it's yes.
That's a yes.
Will be yes.
Melissa Keith, yes. Great, those minutes passed. Committee member reports. Does anyone have any? Anything to update? No? Great. Any requests for information? Terry?
I know what you're talking about a lot tonight, so I might as well add in this.
Okay.
I'm operating under the philosophy that one picture is worth a thousand words.
Okay.
So actually, Sue and I were talking about this, I remember, at the convocation. Great conversation, convocation. I thought a good way to show how Falmouth is such a great system is how many of our people come back and work in Falmouth. And it's so hard to get along. And it's great that things have been going on in Gifford, bringing back business. So I was thinking, maybe if we could send a photographer to each neighborhood. I know you're supposed to send a lot of people. And ask everyone at the building who's, you know, a homeless to have their picture taken. And then just put, here's the seven pictures of the people that have returned. I mean, and then you don't have to write here, but just, I thought that would be very impactful. So maybe, you know, and also you should put the school committee in that group because five of the nine people are homeless. So I don't know. That's just an idea.
I like it. That's a great idea.
Nobody has to go through and look at records and list names. It's just as many people who are there, you know, could come and have their picture taken in group shop. And then just say, look at all the East Falmouth people, where.
Great. Any other requests for information? No? I'd sooner.
Please.
I'm with the new police chief. I'm curious in regards to the memorizing and understanding them, if it's currently up to date? And any information in that regard?
So, yes, and we do that in the spring. And so actually, it's the board opinion of Gordon and the acting chief, Brian Holland, on it.
Okay.
So that's the time.
Everything's cool with the new chief, etc.
We were going to be, we're going to be sitting down soon. And they're.
Great.
Actually, that's probably. That's coming up, yes. Because I do also want to make sure that that's the case.
Any other requests for information? No? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Anyone? Usually everyone jumps at that.
I was rushing to do it because you're one minute early. Yes. I got in at six o'clock.
Welcome, Terry.
Yes.
Welcome, yes.
Everyone gets to yes.
Will be yes.
Great. Mike?
Mike, yes.
Let's keep it here.
We want, yeah.
And Mike would have been for a different background. Every single time he came on camera.
Excellent. Thanks, everyone.